Turn my microphone on and I'll, I'll call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 to order, and I would like to welcome all of our guests this evening, and thank you for attending. We're always happy to see a crowd of smiling faces here. Hopefully smiling faces. But again, thank you for being here. And would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Judy Ann Piles.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Here.
Ed Ulliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protim, any changes to the agenda?
The only change is that since our youth council is not present, we will not have youth city council comments at the end of the agenda. But it is not a change to anything on the agenda.
Thank you. The first order of business is I would like to read and present a proclamation, and for that, I would like to ask Joey Montagnia-Bez to please join me up here. This is, Joey is here in recognition of Bullying Prevention Month. Joey, please join me. Whereas bullying is unwanted aggressive behavior among school-aged children that involves a real or perceived power inherent in balance, the behavior is repeated or has the potential to be repeated over time. The children who are bullied, those who bully others, and those who witness the behavior may have serious lasting problems. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, community organizations, and online through technology. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas thousands of Colorado children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually, and one in five students reports being bullied. And whereas targets of bullying behaviors are at increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school, and students who repeatedly experience bullying behaviors often fear each activities as such activities as riding the bus, going to school, interacting online, and attending community activities. And whereas children who engage in bullying behaviors are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying behaviors often feel less safe, helpless to stop it, and intimidate it. And whereas organizations such as Peer Kindness are dedicated to providing support to children and adolescents experiencing bullying circle, and providing prevention, education through partnerships with youth, schools, youth-serving programs, and community leaders and organizations to reduce bullying and foster a peer-kindness stand, positive, encouraging, emphatic, respectful, and kind. We urge all citizens to work towards the prevention of bullying and consider pledging to be part of the solution to end bullying in all of its forms. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Bullying Prevention Month in the City of Montrose, and urge all community members to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children and adolescents. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Montrose this first day of October 2024. J. David Reed, Mayor.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, the community of Montrose. Thank you, young people. I love that youth city council is alive and active, and youth are seen as partners in our community. It takes all of us. And while some of those statistics, one in five children report bullying, but what does that mean? That means eighty percent of the children do not, and they have the potential to stop it, as well as the adults in this room and in our community. And at Peer Kindness, we are all about promoting positive connection, seeing young people as partners, championing them, and giving them all of our resources for a better future for them. So thank you, City of Montrose. Thank you, youth. Thank you, Mayor.
The next item of business is a really fun piece of business here at the city council. When I became mayor last April, I wanted to do something to recognize the citizens of our community who contribute on a day-to-day basis to our community, but may be unsung heroes. They may not appear on the front page of the newspaper, or even the back page of the newspaper, or in social media. But they are the essence and the heart and the blood of this, of this community. So I came up with the idea to create what I call the You Make a Difference Award. And that award goes to people, citizens within the community can nominate someone to receive this award because that person is making and has made a difference to our community. As I said, perhaps an unsung hero, but nevertheless made a very positive contribution to our community. So right now, I would like to ask the recipient of tonight's award to please come up here and join me. And would you please welcome Ms. Betty Hall for the presentation of the You Make a Difference Award? A few words about Ms. Hall before presenting the award. Since arriving in Montrose in 1975, Betty has quietly set out to make a difference, serving Montrose residents of all ages and economic situations. Betty is always one of the first to volunteer when her church is in need of daycare, a Sunday school teacher, or a volunteer for vacation Bible school. Betty volunteers each year when Rosemont Baptist Church hosts the entire student body and staff of Vista Charter School for lunch. At Christmas, she elaborately decorates her home, excuse me, her home, and invites the young women from Teen Challenge House of Promise, an alcohol and drug rehab facility, for an afternoon luncheon, games, gifts, and crafts. Every holiday without exception, Betty opens her home to host a potluck dinner for those with nowhere to go. For forty-nine years, Betty has volunteered in the recovery room at Montrose Regional Hospital, and also served as president of the hospital's Women's Medical Auxiliary. Betty continues to make mission trips abroad to places including Thailand, Belarus, Africa, Jamaica, Honduras, Ecuador, Albania, Haiti, Taiwan, and Scotland to work with underprivileged children. Wow. Following her mantra, it's what you do for others that's important. Betty truly strives to make each day to make Betty, it's my pleasure to present this award to you tonight. It's called the You Make a Difference. This certificate is presented to Betty Hall for the outstanding dedication and valuable contributions of exceptional service to the Montrose community given this first day of October 2024. J. David Reed, City of Montrose, Mayor. Congratulations.
I hope I don't cry. It's been my privilege to live in Montrose for this forty-nine years. It's a wonderful place, and it's been a privilege to have the Lord Jesus in my heart, that I want to share with others, the love that he has put there. You know, it's only what you do for others that counts. And I'm so happy to see some of the young people back there that's going to make a difference in Montrose in the years to come. So again, thank you, all my friends that have come to support me. They support me all the time, and I appreciate it. And thank you for this award. And I thank my friend that nominated me without me asking me much about it. Thank you again.
We'll give him just a moment to clear the room. Okay, the next item on the agenda, item number seven, is called for public comment for non-agenda items. I have a, I have some words that I need to read, but I'll only read them if we have anyone here who is going to offer public comment tonight for non-agenda items. Can I see a show of hands? Mr. Brown, yes. Okay, we have three or four. So I will read through this. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Please refrain from any personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. So I'll call you up to the podium, one at, one at a time. If you would please state your name for the record, and you will be given three minutes to comment, and I will give you a warning when you have thirty seconds left so that you can wrap up your comments. Who would like to go first? Mr. Chaney first, and then Mr. Brown, you can go next.
Yeah, my name is Tom Chaney. I'm, live at 2,500 Columbine Lane, Montrose. This is regarding the two or the proposed ordinance concerning homeless folks. I just want to say that I've been a, on the board of directors of Lighthouse, which is a nonprofit charitable corporation, pretty much since it was started. You know, homeless people, two thousand years ago, you might have called them lepers. And they, folks in those days, they stoned them and ran them out of town. Seems to me, the flavor of this ordinance that you're considering is treating these people much the same way. I realize we've come two thousand years, and we do things a little nicer than throw rocks at them. But the net effect is about the same. I'd be more than happy to talk to any one of you. I've got some ideas on what you might be able to do. I think I'd like to see a little more work in this, on this issue. It certainly is an issue. It's an issue all over the country. And I'd be happy to talk to anybody. This isn't the time and place to do that, but I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
John Brown, and thank you for having me again tonight. I had a speech already prepared, but like high school with my homework, my dog just ate it. So I'm doing it off the cuff tonight. Mr. Chaney brought up the biblical references to things starting back two thousand years ago. Sanctuary meant something totally different two thousand years ago than it does now. Sanctuary meant a place that a person can go who was being charged with a crime until they could put together their defense, not shook their responsibilities of the crime, but to prepare a defense for the crime where nobody could attack them during that period, and then come back and meet the people that are going to judge them appropriately. And the connotation now, sanctuary city, means it's a place for somebody who's done something illegal, i.e. crossing the border into our free country without documentation, without proper authority, without going through anybody, but coming into our country and then fleeing from the border areas into the central part of the state, specifically Colorado. And because Colorado has become a sanctuary state, and into cities like Denver, because there are cities that are opening up their arms and saying, come, stay here. I don't know if it's because of money, or if it's because of some possibility of voting, having people register to vote for a particular party or not. But sanctuary has a totally different meaning. A person who is in, in our area, you know, requesting sanctuary, they are expecting to get almost $5,000 a month in benefits for a whole year. That's more than most of us make in a whole year. And we had to work for it, and they just showed up and said, here I am. All of that is coming out of our budgets. All of that is coming out of our city budgets.
Thirty seconds, sir.
All that's coming out of our city budgets, our educational system, our medical system, our hospital. All the people that are coming there that don't have money for proper treatment from their insurance companies, they are looking for somebody else to pave their way. Please make Montrose non-sanuary city. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Good evening. My name is Cindy O'Leenhouse, and I have spoken to you a couple of times before. And I just want to express that I'm still very concerned about what's going on here because Texas, Colorado, and other states are experiencing things from illegal aliens that just should not be happening. And I am still very concerned that that does not come here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am, in the back.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Freeman, and I'm here because of the homeless thing that's going on. So my name is Jamie Freeman, and I stand before you today not just as an individual, but as the voice of those who, like me, have been, have faced the harsh realities of homelessness. For the past five years, I have called the streets my home. I am thirty-nine years old, and I have two dogs who are not just my companions, but my protectors. They offer me comfort and safety in the world that often feels threatening. I come to you today with a heavy heart, as I have learned, that our town is moving forward with the measures that criminalize homelessness. This is not just a personal issue. It is a matter of human rights, and more importantly, a constitutional concern. The right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness is enshined in our constitution. When we make it illegal to be homeless, we are denying the individuals, like myself, our basic rights. We are not criminals. We are people facing extraordinary challenges. Imprisoning those who are poor does not solve the problem. It only, oh God, perpetuates the cycle of despair. Homelessness is not a choice. It can often be the result of various factors: job loss, medical emergencies, mental health issues, and family crisis. By criminalizing homelessness, we are ignoring the underlying causes that, and failing to offer the support and resources necessary for the individuals to rebuild their lives. I also want to share a program idea called United We Stand, aimed at addressing homelessness in our community. This initiative, sorry, proposes to the house, individuals, or to house individuals in one-bedroom units where they can have access to showers, restrooms, and laundry facilities. In return for their stay, the residents would participate in community service each week. We are not asking for a handout. We are asking for a hand up. This program offers sustainable solutions that not only provides shelter, but also fosters a sense of responsibility and community engagement. I understand that starting this program may take time, and there may not be an immediate result. However, I urge the town to consider donating five to ten acres of the many unused acres that the town owns. This land could serve as a temporary refuge for those who need, would need it until
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
We can establish the more permanent solution through the United We Stand program. Let us work together to find compassionate solutions rather than punishing the vulnerable by investing in the initiatives that support those in need and make our community a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further, any other public comment? We'll get it from the clerk.
You have some handouts that you might want to give them. My name is Jim Renfro, and I came to start exploring options other than your ordinance that basically says we're going to treat them all the same. What I see is the homeless runs from, like, the general population. We have very high elites down to the very low, low. And what I'm saying is a fact, right now, there's no place for them to live. And one of the ways we're keeping them alive, I brought this to show you what it is, this is a body bag. We pull the toe tags. Where's the sleeping bag? We then give them a sleeping bag. They can put this, get cardboard underneath that, and then they basically, we got a, where's the sleeping bag? There's a sleeping bag. A guy stays in his coat and wraps himself with a $2 emergency blanket. Down in Drangle, they had five people that were alive after the night got down to twenty-five below zero. I'm not suggesting, but we have no place for these people to stay. And all I got to say is this, it's like the general populace. We got the good and we bad. But I think if you get to meet Jamie, get to know her, you go, she's homeless, and her sister's homeless. And I can show you some jerks that, but at the same time, I'm seeing a group, we can't treat them all the same. And I'd like to hand this out, because this is the driving force for me. Which time I got, I'll read it. It basically talks about the sheep and the goats. Time to read? Okay. "When he finally comes blazing and beauty, all his angels with him, the Son of Man will take place on his glorious throne. Then all the nation will be arranged before him, and much of the shepherd sorts, and sheep and goats, putting sheep to the right and goats to the left. Then the king will say those on the rights, 'Enter you who are blessed by my Father. Take what's coming to you. I've been ready for you since the world's foundation. Here's why. I was hungry, you fed me. I was thirsty, you gave me a drink. I was homeless, and you gave me a room. I was starving, you gave me clothes. I was sick, and you stopped to visit. I was imprisoned, you came to me.' Then those sheep are going to say, 'Master, what are you talking about? When we have ever seen you hungry, feed you, or gave you a drink? And when did we ever see you sick or imprisoned and come to you?' Then the king says, 'I'm telling you the solemn truth. Whoever you did one of these things to someone overlooked or ignored, that was one of me.' Then he turned to the goats, the ones on the left, said, 'Get out, you worthless goats. Your good friend, I was hungry, you gave me no meal. I was thirsty, and you gave me ..."
Thirty seconds, Mr. Renfro.
"I was homeless, and you gave me no bed. I was starving, you gave me no clothes. Sick and in prison.' Then those goats are going away. 'Master, what are you talking about?' Some truth, when you fail to do one of these things, that someone is being overlooked or ignored, that was me. You failed to do it. Then the goats will be herded down." And what I'm saying, I was going to have Christopher Egos, here's one of the people that you're talking about. I've got a deal with Christopher, basically served twenty-three years in prison, and Chris, why don't you come up here?
Mr. Renfro, your time's up. Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Christopher Egos, and I am a resident of Montrose, Colorado. I came here back in 2011, and I got married, and ended up getting a divorce, and then God came into my life, and then Jesus bikes came into my life. I've been homeless since. And I guess I'm up here to talk to you guys about the homeless people. I don't know what to talk about. I really don't. Except that we need people to step forward and help us help the homeless. I'm homeless myself, but I'm trying to help the homeless. There's a lot of them that look up to me. I build bikes. I give them bicycles. I take two bicycles. I make one out of it, and I give it to a homeless person, a homeless child. I focus on Concord, the worker lease program. I help all those people out, the men and the women, and anybody in the community that needs help with the bicycle, we help. Or if they need help moving, or if there's an elderly person that needs some assistance, or when the lawn or whatever, then they could get ahold of me, and I could go take care of that for them. I've been trying to get a place to live since, actually, I started searching real hard in 2018, and I cannot find a place. Because I have all these felonies, nobody wants to rent to me. When I was married, I did have a HUD voucher, and I couldn't use it here in Montrose County because all the people, the real estate agencies and all that that had rentals, they wouldn't rent to me because of my background history. Well, it's been, I don't know, about twenty years now since I've had a felony. God's been in my life for about fifteen, sixteen of those. And I can't get no place to live because of the fact that I have felonies. Now, I don't know what's going on with most of the homeless people here, because I really don't sit down and talk to them about their felonies or whatever, you know, or what they're doing. I focus on trying to help them help themselves. That's one of my main concerns is whenever I'm addressed to a homeless person. And the reason why is because I know without a doubt that if you give a homeless person a chance, and show them and encourage them every day, maybe they'll come out of that slump that they're in, you know? Maybe they'll start working. They'll get a job. We've got Shepherd's Hand that offers, they'll wash their clothes.
Thirty seconds, sir.
They'll, give them a shower, something to eat, you know, five days a week, which is awesome. But we need the community to help us with these people that won't let us do this for these people, or let us make it happen, or whatever. I think if we was to get a piece of property or whatever, and we could clear it out, put a fence around it, set something else so that the homeless people with kids can at least go over there and live and be safe.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing no further public comment, we'll move on to item number eight, City Council consideration of the minutes of the September 16, 2024 special City Council meeting and the September 17, 2024 regular City Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 16, 2024 special City Council meeting and the September 17, 2024 regular City Council meeting as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to item number nine, this is City Council consideration of applicants Rain Acassiano, Shiloh Warthen, Jordan Simo, and Nayeti Patel for positions on the 2024-2025 Montrose Youth City Council. And for that, I will turn that over to our deputy city clerk and the youth city council coordinator, Reseda Otiva.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to turn it over to our other youth city council coordinator, Gunnison Klump.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's our pleasure tonight to present to you four more candidates for our youth city councils 2024 through 2025 term. We have Rain Acassiano and Nayeti Patel with us tonight, and we also have video presentations to, sorry, from Shiloh Warthen and Jordan Simo, who weren't able to join us tonight, but who have both recorded their answers to questions from council. Thank you.
Thank you. Rain, would you please come to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like for us to know about you?
Hi, my name is Raina Acassiano. I'm a junior at the Montrose High School, and this will be my second term on the youth city council. A little about me is I'm the drum major for the Montrose High School marching band, and I'm also junior class president, so that's cool.
Great. We're going to ask you one question, and I'm going to ask the mayor pro tem if he would ask the question of you.
Thank you, Rain. We're so glad to see you back for another term. And in your opinion, what are the most important qualities for a youth city councillor to have?
I think any leader in general just needs to have patience, positivity, and passion because if you want something to happen, you need to be passionate about it, you need to have drive, you need to actually want to do something, and of course, for that thing to happen, you need to have patience. And while you are being patient with your progress, you also need to have positivity, keep an optimistic mind, and keep going forward toward your goal. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have Nayeti Patel. Just tell us whatever you'd like us to know about you.
Hi, my name is Nayeti Patel. I'm a sophomore at the Montrose High School, and I participate in, like, FBLA school activities, and I'm really passionate about swimming.
Great. Well, I will ask you the one question, and my question for you is, what is one of your greatest achievements, and tell us how you achieved this goal?
Well, my greatest achievement, I think, was when I had a swimming competition, I won a silver medal, and it made me really happy because I worked really hard for it, and I was, and I'm really dedicated about it. So when I won that, I, like, felt like adrenaline rushing, and like, I thought, like, everything was just perfect, and it just made me really happy about that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you both for being here this evening. I guess I'll turn it back to Gunnison, and we'll have some videos.
Yes, so Reseda here is going to share her screen. We have the two video responses from Jordan and Shiloh.
He's passuit around.
Nobody in.
Ms. Jordan Simo, and I'm a junior at Montrose High School. The answering question, when is a time someone's opinion was different from your own? So I went to an internship at Georgetown University in Washington, DC this last summer for business, and it was full of amazing kids who are all great leaders and all had great academics and knew how to work on these projects. Came to a problem with that, because we were all such good leaders, it was hard for one of us to take charge while the other didn't and all that, and to share responsibilities because everyone wanted to do their own thing and have their opinion be right. And how we worked through this is I communicated a lot with my group and with my partners, not only my opinion, but like, asking about theirs, see if there's a way we can work together, merge them, change our ideas, and it would be best not for us, but for our business partner we were working with. Not only this, but we set expectations on who was doing what, what goals anyone had, and what fields we should be working on, because if someone knew something about one part of the topic, then maybe their opinion could be a little bit more knowledgeable and valuable than someone who doesn't know anything about it. And I think after a week, you know, we worked through it, and I think we came to a great result. We had a great presentation, and our business partner got everything we wanted. So I think it was a great experience, and I think I learned a lot from it, and it really helped me work through having different opinions than other people, and how to make that still be an successful experience. Thank you. Ms. Jordan Simo, and I'm a junior at Montrose High School.
Hi, City Council. My name is Shiloh Warthen. I'm 16 years old, I'm a junior at Montrose High School, and this will be my third, or if you're going to get technical, second and a half term with the youth city council. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but I had volleyball, sadly. The question I chose was, what do you think it means to represent the youth of Montrose? To be honest, I chose this question because I thought it was pretty simple and easy. What I think it means to represent the youth of Montrose is to give the people in our community, the teens who maybe don't have the chance to get involved in activities like this, a voice within the community. So even though they may not be able to be present at these sort of activities or functions, they can still be represented within the community, and we can then create ways to support them so that they, in turn, can have the opportunities to join councils and organizations like this and have just all the tools they need to succeed. And I think that's really important because teens' viewpoint is a lot different from an adult's these days, and the world has changed a lot since the last generation of those teens. So I think it's really important to give the teens of today a voice in all forms of leadership and happenings going on in our community because we're important and we need it. Thanks, that's all.
Okay. Get my microphone back on here. Thank you, Gunnison. So we would consider a motion for positions on the 2024-25 Montrose Youth City Council from applicants Rain Acassiano, Shiloh Warthen, Jordan Simo, and Nayeti Patel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 10, and congratulations to both of you and to the others, please pass along city council's congratulations. And thank you for coming this evening. You're welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave, whatever, your pleasure. Thank you. Item number 10, City Council consideration of resolution 2024-16 to pursue grant funding from the History Colorado State Historical Fund for a National Register of Historic Places nomination for the La Raza Tortilla Flats neighborhood as administered by the National Park Service, and for that, we would turn that over to community development specialist Christopher Ottinger.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ottinger, you've changed.
Yep. Mr. Ottinger had another obligation, so he's asked me to step in. I do think Chris covered this pretty well during work session, so I won't go too into depth here, but just to briefly recap for anyone in the audience who's curious, this is a resolution to seek approval for a grant from History Colorado to fund the nomination process for a National Register of Historic Places district for Tortilla Flats/La Raza Park. We've held a few meetings at MADA, and the general consensus from the residents is that they would like the neighborhood to be recognized as a national historic district, and this grant would provide the funding for, to get all of the applications and paperwork into the U.S. Department of the Interior. There's no match required, so this would be at no cost for the city, and so staff recommends approval of the resolution to apply for this grant. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thanks, Mr. Reese. Questions?
Not a question, but a comment. One of the things that we mentioned in our work session is that this designation would open up grant funding for a lot of renovation and restoration in the neighborhood, and so that it would have a very positive effect on the neighborhood of the La Raza Tortilla Flats.
Any further questions or comments from council?
Well, I think we also ought to comment on the fact that that community reached out, and they have asked for this. It's not something that we, as council, decided they needed. No, they asked for that, and so city has been pursuing it, and we appreciate their input.
Thank you. And to follow up on that, as I said at yesterday's work session, at the last public meeting at MADA, the neighborhood was there in numbers, and the consensus of wanting to have this happen is amazing to me, and it's such a neat thing. I think we're all anxious to continue to pursue this. I would call for any public comment now? Seeing, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-16 as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, please vote. And that carries unanimously. We whipped right through this agenda, we're moving on to item number 11, staff reports? Nothing? Chief, anything? City council comments?
I just wanted to highlight for the record that, as is our usual practice, that we are going to be hosting a budget open house on October 17 at 5 o'clock, I believe, and that we encourage the public to come to that because our budgeting process is very thorough and very meticulous and completely transparent. We actually like having people ask us questions about our budgeting process because it gives us the opportunity to really go in-depth and explain why we do what we do, and it's a great opportunity to ask questions and get involved.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Hearing none, the work of the council on the agenda for tonight's meeting has been completed, and we will stand adjourned.